Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, July 15, 2025. For the Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Charlin? Mr. Coghill? Ms. Gross?
Here.
Mr. Mosley? Mrs. Kale Smith?
Mrs. Strasburger?
Here.
Mrs. Warwick?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Lebel President?
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. For those who are able, please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence.
A pleasure of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our next order of business is proclamations and we will begin with Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am Mr. President. Hi, can we have everyone who's here for the Year of Cooperatives up to the front to share in the celebration? I'm just gonna give a little background about how lucky we are in the city of Pittsburgh to have so many cooperatives and even organizations of cooperatives that if you want to just come so if everyone moves a little bit to the middle, we'll be able to get everybody in the camera shots. I always like to remind people that the cameras are up there by the clock. And a deep history of cooperative cooperation and cooperative organizations, worker co-ops, consumer co-ops, housing co-ops, and there's many of us who are keeping this tradition alive. So we are, we are here to celebrate the Year of the Co-op. Thank you, everybody, for coming down. The Year of the Co-op, city of Pittsburgh, whereas an autonomous association of people united voluntarily to meet their common economic, social, and cultural needs and aspirations through a jointly owned and democratically controlled enterprise is known as a cooperative. Whereas cooperatives foster democratic decision-making and entrepreneurship for all, including lowering the barrier to entry for new businesses, prioritizing small and local sourcing, empowering individuals through shared ownership, and cultivating local leaders who will steward their business in the comment, in the community long-term. Whereas cooperatives act as anchor businesses in the community, allowing profits to be equitably recirculated to local stakeholders, ensuring that community members have a direct stake in the success of their businesses, and provide a stable source of jobs, wealth across generations. Studies show that worker co-ops often retain workers longer than traditional businesses. Whereas cooperatives contribute to sustainable economic growth and stable quality employment, providing jobs to 280 million people around the world, or 10% of the global population. Whereas large cities like Philadelphia, New York, New York, Chicago, Illinois, California's Bay Area, and Madison, Wisconsin are all investing in programs focused on strategic outreach, community education, legislative support, and technical and financial assistance to support cooperatives in their mission to build equitable wealth across the community. And whereas Pittsburgh is home to over 70 co-ops, ranging from bicycle couriers and food stores to construction, credit unions, housing cooperatives, and shared service cooperatives. And whereas the first cooperative on record in Pittsburgh was founded by artisans in 1819 at Front Street and Wood Streets and known as the Pittsburgh Manufacturers Association, helping its members thrive in a newly industrializing economy for decades afterwards. And whereas Pittsburgh has led the cooperative movement in many ways, including holding the first national conference in October 18, 1930, of the Young Negroes Cooperative League, YNCL, a cooperative, a coalition of black-led cooperatives and buying clubs, founding the Pittsburgh Chamber of Cooperatives in 2015, and a task force on employee ownership in 2019 by Councilwoman Erica Strasburger. Whereas many local organizations and businesses, Ujama Collective, Fourth River Workers Guild, Pinup Posters Courier Collective, East End Food Co-op, the East End Food Co-op Federal Credit Union, Black Urban Gardeners and Farmers of Pittsburgh Co-op, Keystone Development Center, the Big Idea Bookstore and Cafe, and Pittsburgh Chamber of Cooperatives and more, continue the cooperative tradition. And whereas the average Pittsburgher interacts with cooperatives on a regular basis, with the Pittsburgh area holding more than 100 cooperatives, ranging from food cooperatives to housing cooperatives, credit unions, worker cooperatives, and many others. Whereas various tools are available to the city to support new and existing cooperatives, for example, the citywide task force on employee ownership. Sorry, that was a repeat. We thank you, Councilwoman. And so, whereas, on June 19, 2024, the United Nations General Assembly proclaimed 2025 as the International Year of Cooperatives, underscoring the vital role cooperatives play in strong economies and thriving communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh alongside the UN recognized that cooperatives promote participation in the development of local communities. And we proclaim 2025 to be the Year of the Cooperative in the city of Pittsburgh and encourage all residents to celebrate and promote the importance of cooperatives.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
We'd like to invite members to come up and tell us who you are, tell us about your co-op, tell us anything we need to know to get engaged and to also self-organize and share the wealth. So who would like to come up? Randall, Ron's coming up, Randall's coming up. Thank you. Also, Madam Clerk, is there a heater on under here? Can you help us? I'm breaking out in a sweat trying to get the proclamation. It's summer for the record and it's gonna be like, it's over 90 degrees, but there's a heater on under this desk. Thank you. I do mention to have to stand in front of the heater.
Great, thanks. Yeah, good morning, everybody. It's just fantastic. One thing that we know that cooperatives are often responses to economic distress as 1819, the 1930s, and recent events have highlighted. And we really, everybody here, dedicated to making the economy work for everybody, to build that solidarity and take it up to the next level. Thank you very much. My name, by the way, is Ron Gatos. I'm a co-founder of the Pittsburgh Chamber of Cooperatives and staff member of the Keystone Development Center.
How do we get in touch with you? How do we get in touch with them?
Pittsburghchamber.coop, C-O-O-P. That'd be great. And I just love working with all of you. Who's next?
Grand rising. This moment is special for more than one reason. Cooperatives is simply a word, but it's actually an action. Ujama Collective represents the fourth principle of Kwanzaa, which is cooperative economics. Its very essence of its being is co-op. One of the things that Ujama is about, we are who we seek to serve. We are women of African descent. Our organization focuses on women artists and artisans. We are located in the historic Hill District and have been active for the last 17 years. That by itself sets us apart and aside from other organizations. We are recently in a relocation aspect, setting up right now on Wiley Avenue, which is another historic location in the historic Hill District. Our new location is located on Wiley. I don't have the address at the top of my head. 2512. So I'm gonna have to unlearn some and relearn this new information. So we welcome you to support us in our work. We welcome you to support the women artists and artisans, of which there are over 100 artists and artisans. Our membership is comprised of just under 50 members, and we are not only active, we mean what we do, and we do everything that our hearts are set on. So we invite you to come along with us on this journey. We are looking continuously to strengthen and to continue to build stronger together. It's also one of the ways that we support our community and all of the things that we need. I appreciate this moment and I thank you all so much for this time.
Hello, my name is Randall Taylor. I work with Steel City Cooperative Housing Association, and we're trying to bring the first tenant-owned housing cooperative this city in 60 years. And it is so simple that we work together in housing. There's many people go to work every single day. They work hard for 40, 50, 60 weeks, 60 hours a week, who may never make enough to own a home. But what about owning something? So that means you come together with those workers, 10, those other workers, there are 10, 20, 30 people, and you pull your money together. It's not a new concept. We have it in Pittsburgh. We have the oldest African-American-owned tenant-owned housing cooperative. 118 families own those units together. And if that roof goes out, they share the cost. If they need a new appliance, they share the cost. And along with that, that sense of ownership of your money not going to a landlord, but going to your family, that is something that would be a game changer, where again, people can pool their resources, come together and cooperate. So we need some help from city government. The city government already passed a resolution years ago about housing cooperatives. Let's make it real. I've talked to many of the council people here. They believe in housing cooperatives. Let's make it happen. We can, it can happen. I see a school board member sitting there. You know, schools are very conducive to conversion to housing. Why are we letting school buildings sit there empty when they can be housing our people? Sorry, folks, no landlords for working and for low-income and working people. Let their money go into their family's pocket instead of a landlord's pocket. Let's make, let's make 2025 a year that we bring forward the first tenant-owned housing cooperative in this city in 60 years. Thank you very much.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Carol Hardeman, and I serve at the Hill District Consensus Group. And I just want to put, just really to say that I am a proud member of the Hill District Credit Union. I have been a proud member of that cooperative for over 30 years. And I remember when I first met Richard Witherspoon, I was complaining about saving. And he gave me this scenario, "Well, Carol, if you join our cooperative and our bank over here and put a dime in once a week, I'm guarantee you, your money will grow." And I said, "A dime, Richard? I'm not gonna get anywhere with the dime." And so anyway, fast track, 10 years later, Richard pulled me over. I was coming into the bank or walking down the street, and he said, "You just are smiling." And I'm like, "What's going on?" And he said, "That dime turned into X amount of money, right, in your savings account." And I'm like, "Whoa, Richard, don't be making a noise, Bill, on the street." But he said, "But that's how cooperatives work, because you've been a proud member and you brought other members in with that dime." So I just wanted to say that. And I also want to say that the Consensus Group, we sponsor Bugs, which is the Black Urban Gardeners, and we also work hand-in-hand with Ujama Collective. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kirsten Rocky. I'm the general manager on the, of the East End Food Co-op's Federal Credit Union. So going in the, the credit union line that Ms. Carol was talking about. So the Hill District Credit Union is amazing, amazing institution. They actually helped to found our organization within the East End Food Co-op. So they're, you know, building economic power in the, in the Hill District. And they were like, "You know what? We need something serving, you know, Homewood, Wilkinsburg, Larimer." And so they, they wanted to sponsor a partner organization. So I, I talk with Richard almost every day, it feels like, right? And we collaborate on so many things. But, you know, we've been around for not as long as them, but for 32 years. And the same kinds of things that Ms. Carol was talking about, encouraging members to save. Also, and I know Hill District does this as well, helping, helping members to get out of predatory loans, because there's so many of these out here, you know, from just, you know, the rates on credit cards are, are out of control right now. I've had a member with as high as 36%. We're able to refinance that debt and get them something that they can manage to pay off. So it really makes a huge difference, saving members thousands and thousands of dollars. And, you know, like, like Ron said at the beginning, it's, it's rough out here, and that's, that's why a lot of people are driven to us. So, yeah, so we're just inside the Food Co-op. Most people know where that is, but you can also visit our website at eefcu.org.
Hi, my name's Amanda. I'm a member-owner of the Pinup Posters Courier Collective. We are a group of bicyclists that distribute posters for arts and cultural events. We've existed for about 13 years, and I think our crew is a testament to just having an idea and making the work what you want. I get paid to, I don't know, I always cry in public. I get paid to ride my bike around. And I love this city. I get to interact with hundreds of business owners every day and promote the arts. And it's a wonderful job. I'm grateful to be a part of the cooperative tradition. And it's really, it can really be replicated, you know? My crew is just five people. And I love the, that anybody could really do that, get together and start a group and have an idea and make it happen.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anita Russell, and I am a very proud member of the Ujama Collective. I had been a part of the Ujama Collective, sort of as a customer and a supporter for a number of years. But given the shift in some of the things that are floating around above my head, back in 2024, I made a major decision that I wanted my boots on the ground to be in the cooperative movement. So of course, I went to Ujama and officially became a member of Ujama. So it wasn't just about an economic decision for me. That was part of it. But it was also a very personal decision for me. I've known these ladies for years. And I decided that what I wanted to do was lock arms with them, to create something new, and to create something different, and to create something bigger, and to create something that is community-bound. And so I stand with them as my sisters, and I'm very, very proud to be a part of this organization. And I'm really looking forward to things that'll be coming down the road as we move forward.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Crystal Jennings Rivera. I am also a member of the Steel City Cooperative. Just wanted to say thank you so much, Councilwoman Deb Gross, for the cooperative day. This has been a long time coming. We've been working on this for a long, long time. And standing here with our partners to make sure that it gets done, also with the backing from the Councilwoman, means that we're heading in the right direction. So thank you so much for this day, and hopefully you guys will be able to become members of our organization. Thank you.
May we have our members? I just want to give one last plug to say I'm also on the board with Randall of the Steel City Housing Cooperatives. And I really believe that all these kinds of co-ops is what we need to empower our residents and build economic power and social power in Pittsburgh. Thank you. Can we have our members?
Next is Councilwoman Kale Smith.
Okay, we're ready. Thank you, Council President. Oh, my glasses. I took my phone, it's not my glasses. Okay, folks from Aposte, come forward. That's you, Pastor Dave Bryan, Director. I tell you, in my district, we have some amazing programs and amazing volunteers. People always say, "We don't have a resource center, we don't have a place for kids." But the reality is, we actually have quite a few independent groups. We have the Open Door, we have the Salvation Army, we have John at Reem Rec up in, in the mound. And we have Keisha Gomez with Hope for Tomorrow, and just a lot of amazing programs that keep our kids busy and occupied in the most positive ways and are positive role models for our kids. So I just want to thank you all for all the work that you do throughout the year, and especially in district too. Whereas Summer Learning Week is a national celebration dedicated to elevating the importance of summer learning by working together to keep kids safe and healthy and ensure that they return to school ready to succeed. And whereas this year's campaign is hosted by the National Summer Learning Association and takes place July 14 through the 18. And whereas, on behalf of the summer programs in Allegheny County, Allegheny Partners of For Out of School Time, Aposte, and Bridge to Learn, will be celebrating the importance of summer, summer learning locally on Wednesday, July 16, at Hope for Tomorrow in Sheridan. And the Boys and Girls Club of Southwestern Pennsylvania in Carnegie, they border us. They will highlight their summer, and I'm glad to see that it's coming to the, to the southwest Pittsburgh region. They will highlight their summer programming and other mobile, mobile summer programs will share about their, their learning activities and initiatives. And whereas, more than half of the students in the United States experience summer learning losses five years in a row and lose nearly 40% of their school year gains by collaborating with providers and coalitions such as Bridge to Learn at Aposte. Aposte strengthens and advocates for high-quality, sustainable out-of-school time experiences so that all youth thrive. And whereas, summer is a critical time for students to develop academically, socially, and emotionally. And summer programs help close the achievement gaps that disproportionately affect low-income youth. Aposte is committed to, to expanding access to high-quality summer learning opportunities across our region. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Aposte for the importance of out-of-school time, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, July 16, 2025, to be National Summer Learning Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
You can all speak, you can all speak, but I have to have Pastor Carver to mic to, and Director.
Good morning. I'm Karen Dyer, and I'm with the Executive Director with Aposte. And it is so important for our kids to have safe spaces to learn in the summer, to make friends, to have adults who invest in them. Childhood goes really fast. We know it, but it goes really fast. And if we don't have people who are investing in kids and making sure that they can learn while their families are working, while their families are taking care of their homes, it's, it's so critical. So I'm so grateful for the Council's recognition and for your work to support our kids and ensure that all young people in the city of Pittsburgh have good places to learn in the summer.
All right, I'm a little taller than Councilwoman Kale Smith. My name is Brian McCombe, the Executive Director of the Open Door Youth Outreach Center. We're a youth outreach center in Crafton Heights. And I am thrilled to be a part of this every summer. I grew up going to the Open Door. My first job was as a teenager, working for our summer camp. And I'm proud to be back as the Executive Director, now leading this camp of wonderful young people. We have almost 90 children registered. We serve about 60 breakfast meals and 60 lunch meals a day. We were there for six weeks. If you do the math, that is over 3,600 meals over the summer that these kids would otherwise be missing out on. We do enrichment activities. We go on field trips. We're working on character and making sure that these skills and these socialization that these kids get during the school year, that they're not missing out on them during the summer. I cannot speak highly enough for what we do and what other organizations in the city are doing. And we are eternally grateful to the support of this council and to Councilwoman and the community for supporting us through all of these endeavors. So, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Hi, councilmembers. Catherine Vargas, Director of Parks and Recreation. You know, clearly, summer learning is incredibly important to us. We run summer camps. And, but I also happen to be the Chair of Aposte, of their board, and have been committed to summer learning forever, since I've been in the city of Pittsburgh. The truth of the matter is that there's organizations just like the Open Door in everybody's neighborhoods. And what's incredibly important about summertime is that that's when organizations that are typically working with young people and families in after-school go into double time for the summer. It is a heavy lift. It is, you know, 10 weeks of full-day care for families, particularly families that might have no other option for summer care for their young people. And what's even more important is that they are learning, places where people are learning, they're building connections. They are not losing what they've learned throughout the school year. They have mentors, they have adults. And some of the greatest, I would say, stories are the ones where we have young people who later become the leaders of summer learning for their communities, just like Brian. So that's an awesome story. But it's not atypical of the community of people that are supporting young people. So if you haven't had a chance yet this summer, I encourage you to visit one of the programs in your community, you know, whether it's a city camp, you come out and see what we're doing during the day, or any of the organizations that partner with us to make sure that every city young person has an option for learning this summer. Thank you, Councilwoman, for your support of this.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, City Councilmembers. Thanks to everybody who is a part of this. I stand here.
Our congregation has taken advantage of the Infrastructure Act that allows houses of worship and other nonprofits to receive tax credits, even though we are a tax-exempt organization, but to receive tax credits for energy programs. And so, last year, our congregation put solar panels on the roof of our building, and we are saving about five hundred dollars a month on electricity now. That's programming that we can put into those children's lives instead of into Duquesne Lights' pocket. And the important thing about that is that under current restructuring going on, that the window for nonprofits being able to take advantage of those tax credits is closing quickly. So I would encourage anybody who has the ear of a nonprofit to explore, it's a wonderful thing, in City of Pittsburgh, it's a forty percent tax credit for those things, so.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, thank you for all you do, friends.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Pastor.
Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may be before city council, perfeiting will not be permitted. After you recall, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Oakland, near the St. Paul Cathedral, Pittsburgh, USA, São Paulo, Brazil, especially Santana, Prefeitura, that's South American Portuguese. Brazil is not an Hispanic country, it's very insulting to them to have an Hispanic month and exclude them. I am the Global Intelligence Candidate for President in 2028, Global Information Intelligence Network dot net. Concerns of council include providing us with the best information available, and with allied twin cities, I think Santana, at three hundred twenty-seven thousand people within São Paulo, should be a Pittsburgh ally. This is consistent with my approach, which is to find optimal information and intelligence over ideology for governance and ally-city connections. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the Institute of Electric and Electronic Engineers dot information theory society. Doctors Claude Shannon, Grace Hopper, Emmy Nether are prime influences on my approach to information, as I think they should be for all of us, they are heroes. I offered to one of my daughters information eleven-seven twenty-two-five on Dark House Lighthouse, when we were coffeeing at Panera in East Liberty, and MM immediately flicked on her phone. "Are you checking?" I asked, and she said, "Yes." I offered a citizen information eleven-six twenty-two-five on Israeli phone invader Pegasus in this council room. SM immediately flicked her phone. "Are you checking?" I asked. "I would never go behind your back like that, no, really? Go behind, go in front, side to side, but check, I want all of you to check. I do not want you to trust me, even though my information accuracy is close to ninety-nine percent, use online, offline sources with an interview." I offer information about São Paulo, Brazil, which is the largest city in the Americas. Its coffee port reputation is deserved, Santos, it is the main hub for artificial intelligence, information, technology in South America. But I want to stress something that takes place in Santana, which was created by Marcelo Rigeves, which is Pegasus Taekwondo for disabled people and children.
Thank you, our next speaker is Dale Vaughn.
Thank you, my name's Dale Vaughn, I'm from Troy Hill, and I own a bar called Space Bar in downtown Market Square. I'm here to talk about a very specific ill downtown that's going on. I love downtown, I love the city. My wife and I took out an SBA loan, put our life savings into a very big bet on downtown, so we're big fans. We built a bar called Space Bar that aims to be the best bar in the world, so our intention is to be excellent. And is it about two years, we've been open eighteen months, something like that? It's going well, but it's, we haven't broken even yet, I haven't made it to holler back, but we're surviving. One of the things I just wanted to bring up, because there's this invisible tax going on downtown, which is this parking problem, I don't know if you guys are aware of it, it's basically a barrier to downtown entry, and I want to bring up, there's a lot of other things to solve, but it's sort of the first thing people see when they come to our city. Parking rates downtown are regularly inflated up to sixty dollars for events that used to be once in a while, it's now regular, I see it almost every week. To park downtown just for an employee, you have to imagine that that's gonna be very hard. There are some parking programs in place, but even with those parking programs, last year, my general manager was adding up her parking bills over the whole year, it was five thousand dollars for her to park downtown. I went looking for leases, thinking like, "I'll take care of that for her, right? I'll try to make that on us, as a business." The best I could do was three thousand dollars a year to have, I have twelve employees, guys, that's like way too much money for me to be able to deal with as a small business just getting off the ground. There's another part of this, which is that basically, when somebody comes to downtown, they're making, sometimes a pilgrimage, it's their first time, they're coming down for a year, they come down for a Picklesburg or whatever event, they've got tickets to a show, they come downtown, they see that, and I have had people who've had reservations at our bar, to put it in perspective, sometimes people spend two hundred, three hundred dollars at our bar. They'll come downtown, put a reservation in, when they get there, they see those parking rates, and they turn around. And I've had calls that said, "I'm sorry, I'm not gonna pay sixty dollars to park," and then come in and spend another extra amount on something like that. These are people who have money, right? These are people who are coming in from Swickley and want to have a good time in the city. We're having challenges with this, and it's continuing to be a problem. I have spoken with the PDP, I've spoken with the Office of Nighttime Economy, I've emailed all of my counselors here. There needs to be some kind of program in place, I'm not sure exactly what it should be, but there are some programs out there that have been successful. Raleigh, North Carolina, put together a program that offered some free parking on weekends, some two-hour free parking in certain lots on weekdays, and the spike they saw in the nighttime economy in particular was very high. So there are opportunities, I think, to employ, and I would like to see this council come up with something, I don't know exactly what that looks like, I'm willing to have a conversation afterward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Willard Corey. I do not see them online, therefore, our next speaker is Ralph Williams.
Good morning, City Council, thank you, President Lavelle, members of council, it's great to be here as usual. I wanna, I know you guys went on your little summer break, and what I want you to do is look yourselves in the mirror and reflect on what's happened in the City of Pittsburgh. Public safety, city public works, PCTV still hasn't, doesn't done nothing about PCTV, Housing Authority, City of Pittsburgh. You know, I lived in a building up in Allentown called the Calituri Plaza, I recently moved out in May. My reasons for it is because I got tired of it, and I got tired of nobody doing anything to try to fix this. You didn't fire Castor Binion, you didn't do, there's a lot of things you didn't do with the Housing Authority, City of Pittsburgh, some of these managers need to be fired, there's a lot of problems there, okay? I'm not gonna go into it any further, because I don't have enough time, all right? PCTV, I've been dying here several times, I've been on this Zoom here, to tell you about PCTV, I haven't heard anything about it, I told you last week or two weeks ago, you guys can look like heroes, all right? And stick it where Ed Gany can't see the sunshine, all right? Because he did nothing about this, all right? I got lied to by Jake Pollak, which I told you about as well. Another thing I want to talk about today is, I support the Hill District because my brother lives in the Hill District. I support it because I have friends up there. I don't appreciate people who make public comment about me and the suggestions that I made, because your councilman doesn't do his job, all right? It's that simple, all right? I suggested two weeks ago that Aldi open up up in the Hill District so that you can have some, all right? As a grocery store, my brother can go shopping and not have to go sixty miles to go shopping, my friends can go shopping that live up in the Hill District, okay? This is unacceptable to me, because I support everything you do, lady, and I know who you are, and I know what you speak here every week, but for you to say something about me saying something about the Hill District when I don't live there, I have a right to, because my brother lives there. And not only does my brother live up there, my friends live up there, and when it comes to that, that's when I get ignorant. And now, your city councilman doesn't do his job, and that's the part, you need to worry about that more than you need to worry about what I have to say about the Hill District. I want to thank everybody today for letting me speak here, and you guys have yourselves a great day.
Thank you, that exhausts our list of registered speakers, will now take comments from those in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward, provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Thank you. Carlino Giampolo, Panther Hollow. I'm here today because of a grave injustice against the longtime residents of the iconic Italian neighborhood of Panther Hollow. A massive illegal skate park spearheaded by Councilmember Bard Warwick, who doesn't represent Panther Hollow, was constructed inside the Panther Hollow Playground. I ask Pittsburgh City Council to take these three actions. One, remove the illegal skate park from the Panther Hollow Playground. Two, shut down the Panther Hollow Playground to end the skateboarding activity. And three, have Councilmember Bob Charlin conduct an in-depth investigation of the building of the illegal ghetto-looking skate park from its inception to the present. Here are a few key reasons. One, totally illegal. The Sunshine Law was broken, as no longtime resident of Panther Hollow was informed before the massive construction of this skate park, not even the owner of the home abutting our Panther Hollow Playground. Councilmember Bob Charlin must follow the truth of this illegal skate park to wherever it leads, even if that may lead to the city's legal department or the district attorney's office. Two, no permits issued for the building of the skate park. I'm unaware of any plans submitted to the city or permits issued to the young skateboarders who built this skate park. I'm also unaware that any city supervisor oversaw the construction of this massive skate park. Three, extreme liability exposure. Skateboarders in this illegal skate park could sustain massive injuries resulting in lawsuits and then tens of millions of dollars, for which city council members and taxpayers would be responsible. On June 16th, Councilmember Warwick and I witnessed the horrific fall of a skateboarder there, which could have quickly led to that. Four, disrespectful naming of the Panther Hollow Playground. The very next day, on June 17th, and again, without any notification to any resident of Panther Hollow, Councilmember Warwick persuaded her fellow council members to name our playground Oakland DIY Skate Park. Panther Hollow residents have fought gallantly for decades to protect and preserve their historic neighborhood and identity, and that name does not even reflect the official name of their very own playground. Five, diminished quality of life. The illegal skate park has greatly diminished the quality of life for Panther Hollow residents who never wanted or needed a skate park. The sounds of the skateboards crashing onto the concrete from morning to night permeate their once peaceful and quiet neighborhood. Finally, I want to remind any council member who stonewalls or opposes these suggestions not to repeat the past mistakes of the Field Mon Oakland Connector Project. Do not underestimate the power and depth of the.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Awaken.
Your time has expired, sir, you can submit your comments, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I was on the list, but it's okay. I'm actually, wasn't gonna speak, but this lady, Ms. Brown, actually experiences the same thing I have experienced recently, and I was beaten last week. I have an injury in my skull right now, and I'm on antibiotics, but Ms. Brown said it's important for me to come up here and speak, and actually I have something to give to council and to Councilwoman Gross, especially because I want her to know what's going on. And I'm actually, I think most of you know me one way or the other, I'm not normally this. Why is this so hard? So, I'm disabled, I have a history of survivorship, I've never hidden that, I think a council person knows that actually a little bit. So I'm the sole legal leaseholder of my home, and I have individuals who've been entering into my home and tampering and threatening me while I sleep. I've called authorities three times this week. My motor scooter's been stolen, and then deliberately broken, and then individuals left a piece behind in my home, just because they wanted to make sure that I knew that they could get in anytime. I can't. One of the individuals is a person who's supposed to be. One of the people who broke in last night while I was sleeping said that he spoke to a lieutenant of the police department, and I have the message, and the lieutenant said that if, he said that if the doors are locked, that he had every right to break down the door, and that he would be here soon. When I mentioned this to law enforcement, they told me, "That's not really our problem." They said, "I can't say that wouldn't happen," and they said that if somebody's lived there before, they have every right to come back, and they couldn't say that the lieutenant wouldn't say this, this is the third time. I think all of us would agree, that's not very orderly, and I think that all of us The illegal skate park has greatly diminished the quality of life for Panther Hollow residents who never wanted or needed a skate park. The sounds of the skateboards crashing onto the concrete from morning to night permeates our once peaceful and quiet neighborhood. Finally, I want to remind any councilmember who stonewalls or opposes these suggestions not to repeat the past mistakes of the Field Mon Oakland Connector Project. Do not underestimate the power and depth of the-
Thank you very much. Thank you. Your time has expired, sir. You can submit your comments. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I was on the list, but it's okay. I'm actually, wasn't going to speak, but this lady-
Ms. Brown.
Ms. Brown actually experiences the same thing I am experiencing recently. I was beaten last week. I have an injury in my skull right now and I'm on antibiotics. But Ms. Brown said it's important for me to come up here and speak. And actually, I have something to give to councilwoman Gross, especially because I want her to know what's going on. And I'm actually, I think most of you know me one way or the other, I'm not normally this- Why is this so hard? So, I'm disabled. I have a history of survivorship. I've never hidden that. I think a councilperson knows that actually a little bit. So I'm the sole legal leaseholder of my home, and I have individuals who've been entering into my home and tampering and threatening me while I sleep. I've called authorities three times this week. My motor scooter's been stolen and then deliberately broken and then individuals left a piece behind in my home just because they wanted to make sure that I knew that they could get in anytime. I can't. One of the individuals is a person who's supposed to be under- One of the people who broke in last night while I was sleeping said that he spoke to a lieutenant of the police department, and I have the message. And the lieutenant said that if, he said that if the doors are locked, that he had every right to break down the door and that he would be here soon. When I mentioned this to law enforcement, they told me, "That's not really our problem." They said, "I can't say that wouldn't happen." And they said that if somebody's lived there before, they have every right to come back. And they couldn't say that the lieutenant wouldn't say this. This is the third time. I think all of us would agree that's not very orderly. And I think that all of us would agree that it's not a good idea for butts to be hanging out of windows in the middle of the night in Pittsburgh. These officers don't seem to understand that. Additionally, I spoke with the crisis line this week and they actually asked me to talk to the people doing this to see what they wanted. But even worse, when they said, "Why are you walking down?" Actually, these officers won't even enforce a PFA. I'm telling you, they won't enforce it. And when I called resolved, they said, "I know what I would do is I would just go inside, lock the door and lay down and close your eyes." Can somebody help me, please? I have something for all of you.
Thank you. You can submit it to the gentleman there.
I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's Katy River Tires up in the Hill District. Now, when people come in, a lot of times I'll say, "Are you going to speak?" And he was explaining to me that he wasn't, but he had a written note for you about what's happening to him. And I say, "The note is no good. You need to speak. The people need to see what we're going through." Now, I live in Katy River Tires. On the 26th, which is my grandbaby's, my granddaughter, she's an old woman now, but her birthday, came back through Katy, to Katy River. And here's Rosita McKinley, the one who's threatening me, the one who beat the lady, mother and daughter with a hammer, the one who just took and beat a man in his head with sticks. Now, the neighbor on my floor said that he seen her in there and he told her, "You're not allowed in this building." She said, "You can't run this, you don't own this building." Okay, so then, he went down and told the guard. The guard called the police. They took her out of there. Okay, so this went, this day, I'm talking about my grandbaby, birthday, I come in and I go in, they're going upstairs, so I'm waiting for the elevator. Well, I hear this tall resident, big tall man, come in and tell her mother, Rosita's mother, he said, "Your daughter's out here talking about whose ass she's getting ready to kick." Well, there was a man, there's a resident that lived there told that she's not allowed in there. Well, she said, "You called the police." I mean, do you understand? If we call the police and she knows it, she comes back and she will threaten you. Now, she beat the man in his head, he's standing there, she's just standing there and she just walks up and gets the sticks and starts, "This man has cancer. Do you understand?" I don't understand why I'm saying anything because when I seen him, he was a heavy man, he's real small. And I said, "How you get as small as me?" He said, "I got cancer." My daughter told me, "Don't say nothing." But how can it be when I go to the manager and tell him that she beat this man in the head and his arm camera? She says, "She doesn't talk to me like that." When I went to her and said, "I'm afraid," she said, "Don't say that." Then I said, "She's following me and harassing me." She said, "I just put her big breasts in there, she don't talk to me like that." But about three or four weeks later, they heard Rosita saying, "What did you say to my mother?" And they looked, she had the manager by her neck. The manager ended up, they were rolling on the floor. Do you understand? She's coming every day and if she sees me, then she takes and says things to me. Who's saying quiet now?
Please, please address council-
See, that's what I'm saying about these ignorant council people. You know what? You too, I'm helping you, but she's supposed to wait till everybody gets finished. They always talk when we're here and when I say something, then it's me. But how come they don't know they're supposed to be up there, not back here talking while we're talking? We get three minutes. Do you understand? Only three minutes. And she runs her mouth all day long. I'm tired of it. Do you understand? I'm being threatened. My life is being threatened. Let me tell you, if something happens to me, my-
Next speaker, please.
Thank you for making me or appointing me or choosing me to be a special agent for you, Lord Jesus. Woo! We need you. We need you. I return to send any voodoo hexes curses any of you send towards me. God's protected me, I promise you. That's why I'm still standing here. Dr. Charles Stanley once said, "Nothing is more urgent, nothing more necessary, nothing more rewarding than hearing what God has to say." And that's apparently why he put me on this platform, to share with you what he has to say. Today's message is about helping those in need. We've just heard from a couple of them. Wow. Isaiah 26:3 says, "You keep him in perfect peace whose mind is stayed on you because he trusts in you." I'm so honored to be trusted by God. Helping those in need. I'm choosing to help my neighbors in need by sharing the word from Matthew 22:39, which is the second greatest commandment, and it's to love your neighbors yourself. That's a tough one when people are trying to kill you. How do you do that, Lord? I ask them every day, "How do you find the compassion?" That's what it is. Compassion, to still love those who are trying to kill you. How? How do you do it? Every day. It's grace, that's what it is. We live under grace. His grace and mercy is what has all of us breathing. It's Him that makes our heart beat. I'm sharing with our neighbors the fraud in our government, which you guys are a part of, because I'm connected to it. That's why He led me here, to stand before you and to let you know that you will not get away with it. You will not. Our children are being targeted. Proverbs 20:11 says, "Even a child is known by his actions, by whether his conduct is pure and right." My daughter was targeted. She's now estranged from our relationship. She's been manipulated and bribed into believing that if she works for the government, she or someone will still be able to take me out for my inheritance, trust, and whatever was left from me in a will. Someone has illegal guardianship over me. Someone has illegal conservatorship over me. This is the fraud in our government on paper. It's not working. I'm still here. Thank you, Jesus, for loving me. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll turn to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Charlin, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Councilperson Charlin presents Bill Number 2054. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with NeoGov for the continual maintenance of software for HR, workforce management, applicant tracking, and civil service testing, and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed fifty-two thousand dollars.
And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2055. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of public safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency to acknowledge the city of Pittsburgh as a local sponsoring agency for the Type III Urban Search and Rescue Task Force as designated in Pennsylvania Act 113 of 2024 and currently named Pennsylvania Strike Team 1 at no cost to the city. Bill 2056. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Jones Embartlet Learning LLC in an amount not to exceed five thousand seven hundred and four dollars and ninety-nine cent for payment of books for the Training Academy Recruit Class 134. And Bill Number 2057. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the public safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with IIA lifting services for professional services relating to the testing and inspection of ground ladders for some not to exceed thirty thousand dollars over one year.
And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President. Those are titles at the top, yeah.
Sorry. Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2058. Resolution amending Resolution 877 of 2024, authorizing the mayor, the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance, and the office of the mayor to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Incapitulie, now doing business as Accenture, to upgrade the city's customer relationship management system and our related capabilities and processes by increasing the approved amount by thirty thousand dollars for a total cost not to exceed one million one hundred twenty-five thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-three cent over three years, subject to appropriation by city council in future budget years.
Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning, Article I, introduction and establishment, Chapter 902, zoning districts in general, to add inclusionary zoning in zoning, Article II, base zoning district, Chapter 903, residential zoning districts, to amend minimum lot sizes, Article III, overlay zoning districts, to remove 90704A IZO, inclusionary housing overlay district, Article IV, development standards, to amend 91507, performance point system, Article II, base zoning, Chapter 905, special purpose districts, Article IV, planning districts, Chapter 908, public realm districts, Chapter 909, planned development districts, Article V, use regulations, Chapter 911, primary uses, Chapter 912, accessory uses structures, Chapter 913, use exceptions and conditions not listed in use table, Article VI, development standards, Chapter 914, parking, loading, and access, Chapter 916, residential compatibility standards, Article VIII, review and enforcement, Chapter 922, development review procedures to remove minimum off-street parking from the zoning code, Article V, use regulations, Chapter 912, accessory uses and structures, Article IX, measurements and definitions, Chapter 925, measurements, and Chapter 926, definitions. Bill Number 2081. Ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VII, business licensing, Article VII, service businesses, adding a new chapter, 768, short-term rental housing. And Bill Number 2082. Ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning, Article V, use regulations, Chapter 911, primary uses, 91102, use table, and adding Section 91104A 101, short-term rental, and amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning, Article V, use regulations, Chapter 912, accessory uses and structures, by adding Section 91209, short-term rental.
And Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 2059. Resolution amending Resolution 475 of 2024, which authorize an amended agreement or agreements with AE7 Pittsburgh LLC for costs associated with the 4012 Boulevard of the Allies project by amending JDE account information and by increasing the total spend by twenty-seven thousand six hundred fifty dollars and forty-four cent for a new not to exceed amount of six hundred two thousand three hundred ninety dollars and seventy-five cent. Bill 2060. Resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the director of Finance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh, to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement or agreements with the Public Parking Authority of Pittsburgh for the purpose of consolidating the provisions of six prior agreements and leases into one document, and to supplement and/or revise the operational and revenue-sharing relationships between the parties. Bill 2061. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Public Schools to allow the city of Pittsburgh to become an out-of-school time partner provider during 2025-26 school year with no direct cost associated with this agreement or agreements. Bill 2063. Ordinance authorizing the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement or agreements with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Services with regard to Medicaid reimbursement services for a term of one year plus two possible one-year extensions at the party's mutual option. The agreements shall result in net revenue for the city but will require upfront expenses in an amount not to exceed four million seven hundred thousand dollars annually for a total amount not to exceed fourteen million one hundred thousand dollars. Bill 2079. Resolution approving the recommendation made by the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Hillcrest Street between North Graham Street and North Fairmont Street be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. And Bill Number 2080. Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest of any and into the publicly owned properties in a fifth ward, city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 27B, Lot 365, Block 10D, Lot 381, and Block 25S, Lot 204, 749 Shawnee Street, 2926 Warpser Avenue, and 2905 Bepford Avenue, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city.
Motion to waive Rule 8 on 2059 and 2080.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 2059, you said 2080, Councilman?
Yes, sir.
Will both be on tomorrow's Senate Committee agenda.
Thank you.
And I take it to Councilwoman Kell Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you. No new papers, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law. I have you listed as one.
I don't have any.
She doesn't have any? Okay. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2064. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with the law firm of Fisher Phillips, LLP, in connection with issues involving labor disputes at a cost not to exceed one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars over one year. And Bill Number 2065. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of the new Pittsburgh Courier Doing Businesses Real Times, Inc., for legal advertisements published on June 4 of 2025 in connection with the city of Pittsburgh quiet title actions for an amount not to exceed five thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2066. Resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of finance, and the director of public works to enter into an easement agreement or agreements with Duquesne Light Company for the installation and maintenance of one PMH nine-switch and one transformer on city-owned parcel on 200 North St. Clair Street, Council District Number 9, at no cost to the city. Bill 2067. Resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with Michael Baker International, Inc., for construction management and construction inspection costs associated with the Smithfield Street Reconstruction Phase 1 project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed one million nineteen thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-seven cent reimbursable at eighty percent. Bill 2068. Resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Finance and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary construction easements in order to advance the Streets Run Channel remediation project at no cost to the city. Bill 2069. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with ENL X Advisory Services USA LLC to provide natural gas supply services to city buildings and facilities as well as natural gas cost management services on behalf of the city in an amount not to exceed one million dollars per year and at a cost not to exceed five million dollars over a span of six years. And Bill Number 2070. Resolution approving the recommendation made by the director of-
Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Cox Avenue from Elwell Street to 5326 Cox Avenue will be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
And next is Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development. I know he had to leave the meeting early. He has two bills.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2071, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh with Duquesne Light Company to partner on the Community Fueling Infrastructure Grant Project at no cost to the city. And Bill Number 2072, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Christine Davis Consultants, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $49,600 over one year to provide archaeological services to Westinghouse Park, a city park.
And for myself.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 2073, Resolution Appointing Chantelaya Matthews as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board with a term to expire April 30 of 2029.
Need a motion to either interview or approve?
Motion, motion to interview. Although I've never heard from them.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Her deployment will be held for an interview. Next is the communication.
Bill Number 2074, Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting to City Council the attached status update from the Grants Office for the week ended July 11, 2025.
Need a motion to re-receive and file.
Summon.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bill has been re-received and filed. The next order of business is reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, presenting the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2045, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for July 9, 2025, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1965, Resolution Amending Resolution 932 of 2024, which authorized the fee schedule for 2025 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code by revising utility permit fees as recommended by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure at no cost to the city. Bill Number 1989, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Block and Associates for legal consulting services in connection with the current city construction project for an amount not to exceed $40,000 over one year. And Bill Number 1990, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II, Fiscal Article III, Depositories, Chapter 221, Contracts, Section 22102, Requirements for Qualification, 22106, Creation of Reinvestment Review Committee, 22107, Evaluation of Financial Institutions, and Section 22109, Award of Banking Business, so as to fix the term of contracts with financial institutions to three years.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight members present.
The bill having received legally required number of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, presenting the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2046, Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for July 9, 2025, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1962, Resolution Amending Resolution 848 of 2021, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an amended professional services agreement or agreements with Endtime Solutions, Inc., for EMS and Police Scheduling and Timekeeping Services by increasing the approved amount by $434,140.30 at a total cost not to exceed $1,336,665.30. Bill 1984, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Pulse Point Foundation in an amount not to exceed $6,000 for the city's share of the license fee for the annual renewal of the Pulse Point Emergency Services Application. Bill 1985, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Howell Rescue Services, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $6,264 for payment of preventative maintenance of hydraulic rescue tools. Bill Number 1986, Resolution Amending Resolution 715 of 2024, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Hundred Public Safety, Inc., doing business as performance protocol to identify and implement additional solutions to address Pittsburgh Bureau of Police recruitment and retention challenges by increasing the approved amount by $40,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $78,172 over two years.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bill having received legally required number of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2047, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for July 9, 2025, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1991, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to accept a donation from Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership of a mobile parklet valued at $18,000 to be installed along the Three Rivers Heritage Trail at Doer Street Trailhead. Bill 1992, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an easement or easements and any amendments thereto in order to provide access and passage for the traveling public around the Brereton Street Construction Site at no cost to the city. And Bill Number 2024, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Finance, and the Director of Public Works to enter into an easement agreement or agreements with Duquesne Light Company for the installation and maintenance of one pole and wires on and over city-owned parcels at 4600 Butler Street, Council District 7, at no cost to the city.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? If not, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bill having received legally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presenting the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2048, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for July 9, 2025, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1994, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement or agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Bloomfield Garfield Corporation for the installation and maintenance of a mural at Leslie Recreation Center at no cost to the city. Bill 1995, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement or agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Casey Dro cultural Productions doing business as the art supply company for the installation and maintenance of a photo installation at Beachview Healthy Active Living Center at no cost to the city.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bill having received legally required number of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2075, Reported a Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for July 9, 2025, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1987, Resolution Amending Resolution 524 of 2020, authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a multi-year agreement or agreements with E+ Technology, Inc., for network monitoring and a security professional services partner aligned with key business goals of reducing risk, improving service efficiency, and minimizing client impact to include better network utilization, monitoring, and enhanced security posture throughout the enterprise by increasing the approved amount by $765,300 for an amended total cost not to exceed $1,249,493 over nine years.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bill having received legally required number of votes is passed finally. And finally, Councilman Cory Mosley, presenting the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 2076, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for July 9, 2025, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1988, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the United States Department of Agriculture for Services relating to a cooperative wildlife damage management program for whitetail deer for some not to exceed $99,494.05 over one year.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Councilman Smith?
I just want to thank the administration again for this, for doing this. But I do want to say I think we need to have some conversations about what we are doing with animal care and control because I got a video yesterday in Shortier City of eight raccoons and four cats all playing together in the middle of the street and in people's yards. And they don't, but there's no management of any of the wildlife in the city of Pittsburgh. It seems very rare now. And I used to be able to call right away and say somebody needed help and they would get help. And now I don't see that as much. So I would like to have a conversation about that as well, managing other wildlife population. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bill having received legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Anything from members? Councilman Charlin?
Yes. So I met with, on Friday, met with some folks that are involved in the National Association of Independent Venues, things like Bottle Rocket in my district, or Brillobox, Thunderbird, things that are not necessarily attached to corporate conglomerates. I would like to call them in and have a post agenda probably sometime this fall so that we can talk about these cultural institutions and how we can better serve them and not move everything towards the corporate overlords here. So I would like to call for a post agenda on independent venues in the city of Pittsburgh. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We'll work with the clerk in your office to get that scheduled.
Thank you.
Anything else from members? If not?
Yes, Council President.
Councilman Warwick?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to start by first of all thanking Councilman Charlin for the really outstanding public hearing on litter or trash in general around the city. It was, it was a great hearing. And so I had actually called for a post agenda last year with the hope, on litter, with the hope of sort of allowing, you know, DBW to come to the table and talk about the long-term plan for dealing with litter, bringing some of our partners together at the table. That did not, we didn't get there last year. So I would like to call again for, for a post agenda on litter and with, you know, the hope that we have that plan in place for, you know, early this fall so that when we get to budget season here at council, we can, you know, really start making some moves to put in place. Thank you.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll also work with Councilman Warwick and a clerk to get that scheduled. Anything else from members? Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, thank you. Over the weekend, I had the opportunity to attend, you know, two really inspirational events. You know, one was directly connected to, you know, the Frogs proclamation last Tuesday. They had their 115th Anniversary Gala at the Weston Downtown, and it was this, you know, truly joyous occasion. But just to, you know, reflect on an organization that's been around for 115 years and what they've added to the rich cultural heritage, you know, of this city and, you know, reminded that, you know, Mr. Curry mentioned, you know, here in this hollow chamber that, you know, Cumberland Posey, you know, was a member of the Frogs. And I misstated that he's one of the few folks who is a member of the Major League Baseball Hall of Fame and the Basketball Hall of Fame. Correction, he is the only person who was a member of the Baseball and Basketball Hall of Fame from Homestead, Pennsylvania. And we should have a statue or something, you know, named after, you know, someone and who's been, you know, who's contributed, you know, so much not only to the history of this city but to the history of this country and also was quite the entrepreneur, you know, as well. So I just wanted to give a shout out to the Frogs as well as to the Harriet Tubman Guild who hosted their 110th anniversary of Harriet Tubman Terrace in East Liberty on Friday with myself and the mayor. And my father was able to be on hand because my father, the first ever commissioned sculpture he ever did was at Harriet Tubman Terrace a few years before I was born in the early 1970s. So that was a really, you know, great occasion. But again, I just wanted, you know, just to highlight the rich, you know, cultural heritage, you know, of this city and for the purposes of my comments, you know, the rich tradition of Black Pittsburgh, you know, the contributions that Black Pittsburghers have made not only to this city and this country, you know, has been quite momentous. And I think it's something that regardless of what continent your ancestors came from, I think we all should be proud of what a Black Pittsburgh has meant not only to this city but to this country. So I just wanted to shout out the Harriet Tubman Guild as well as the Frogs organization.
Thank you.
Thank you. On a separate note, I want to thank Bishop Zubik for his service to the Catholic Diocese in the city of Pittsburgh. They do a lot with Catholic charities across the city of Pittsburgh. And congratulate the new bishop, Bishop Ekman. Both of them actually live in District 2 right now, but I think that's going to change. I think one might move over to Oakland. But I just want to thank everyone for the event they put on together yesterday, too. Thank you.
Thank you. If nothing else from members, meeting announcements. This afternoon at 2 o'clock, council will hold a cablecast post agenda on the residential permanent parking program, which will be chaired by Councilperson Charlin. Tomorrow, Wednesday, July 16th at 10:00 a.m., council will hold our standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. Also on Wednesday at 2:00, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bills 1897 relative to the institutional master plan for Duquesne University. Speaker registration will close at 12:00 p.m. on the day of the hearing. And then on Thursday, July 17th, with sessions at 1:00 and 2:00 p.m., council will hold a briefing on the Pittsburgh Water Asset Transfer. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill up the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. With that, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Summon.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.